The Cuyahoga County Committee of the Hall Meeting for Tuesday, July 22, 2025, will please come to order. The time is about 2:35. And I would ask the clerk to please call the roll.
Good afternoon, everyone. As a reminder to all in attendance, this meeting is being recorded and livestreamed on the county's YouTube page. Calling the roll, Mr. Castleberry?
Here.
Mr. Gallagher?
Here.
Mr. Schlepper?
Here.
Ms. Conwell?
Here.
Mr. Jones?
Here.
Ms. Turner?
Here.
Mr. Hauser?
Here.
Ms. Simon? Ms. Simon's absent at the moment. Mr. Kelly?
Here.
Mr. Sweeney?
Present.
Council President Miller?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you very much. The next item on the agenda is public comment. Do we have anybody signed in?
Kimberly Novak?
Good afternoon. Welcome to the committee.
Thank you. I'm just-
Ms. Novak, if you could state your name for the record, please?
Yeah, my name is Kimberly Novak, and I am a resident of Norma Her, Homeless Shelter for Women, otherwise known as the Hell. And basically, I've come here just about some ongoing issues at the shelter. Namely, number one is, I came for the first time to stay at the shelter for about two weeks back in 2022. And at that time, I saw bedbugs, bedbug carcasses in the shelter and everything. There were some in the grooves of my shoes and everything when I left, in fact. And I didn't manage to bring them home or anything when I was able to leave. But there's still an ongoing issue. And the procedures that the staff may have been enacting at that time or not, I've never heard anything about being discussed about the bedbug issue. So this time, I was just recently having a conversation with one of the very pregnant individuals in the shelter and some other people about seeing bedbugs in the bathroom. And they approached staff about it. One, the pregnant individual, very pregnant individual, actually saved one in a tissue paper from the downstairs bathroom and showed staff. The impression that I got because she was complaining about it was that staff treated it very dismissively and, you know, is basically just blaming the residents for bringing the bedbugs in, when in fact, the laundry facilities that we have there now aren't even enough to accommodate just the regular laundry washing and drying. And we have a blocked off section of the building, which at one point, I think they used for new intakes to actually, you know, wash and dry their clothes before coming in to kind of prevent this sort of thing in some way. However, those are blocked off now due to construction, which was not even going on two years ago. And I didn't hear about those procedures back then, so they were not being enforced. So my concern here is, I have bipolar disorder. I also have social anxiety disorder and generalized anxiety disorder. Am I done?
Take a sentence or two to finish.
Okay. And it's just despite, like, it's being exacerbated due to the theft of my medication two times in a row, mail theft that has happened to me. I still haven't gotten my state ID. And then also, the bedbug situation that's now currently exploding in the building with nothing to be done. So I just wanted to voice my concerns.
Thank you very much for sharing your concerns.
Thank you.
Lou?
Good afternoon.
You just heard Lou?
Could you speak in-?
Yes, this is Lou. Thank you. You just heard another person staying at 2027 Payne Avenue experienced the problems. These problems are not just recent. This problem has been on since they moved the service to this facility. That means even before I came. And in the past, I have reported how these things handled. In general, you would not have anything actually done because the reason always we have learned is not enough funding. The building is old, has broken foundations. This is also one of the reasons why, for the current construction, I have been saying that even before two and a half of the new council members joined this council, I said this will not work. Because when you, no matter what you do in the renovation, you will not really fix these fundamental problems, like fixing up the broken foundations. So no paths from outside come in. They are free. They can go everywhere they want to go, but we cannot. We cannot, we couldn't even use a stairway when there was no power for the elevator, which was not even inspected, still under construction. So for all these problems here, please understand, we do need a proper funding in order to have a proper daily operation. Otherwise, in this person's case, she already has some mental health issues. She's taking medication, but now, in this facility, her medication can be gone. She still cannot get her ID. So it prolongs her time to stay there. And there's no resolution for that. Please help. We need a proper funding in order to hire the proper people to work there in the first place. Thank you very much.
In case I mispronounce your name, I'm so sorry. Nick Korsoros?
Good afternoon, Council. How you doing?
Good afternoon.
Nick at Sarah's First Energy. Just wanted, more than anything, to introduce myself. I know I've met many of you in the past, but just wanted to make sure that you knew that I was your contact at First Energy. So I've been with the company now for 15 years and in this role for seven years in a different area. So more than anything, just wanted to make sure that you all knew who I was, make sure you had the right person to contact if you have any issues or questions, and just more than anything, just say hello.
Thank you very much.
Mr. President?
Yes.
Thank you. Can you share your contact info with the clerk so I can-
Yeah, of course. Most definitely, yeah.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you, Nick.
Okay, great. Thank you very much for coming.
Have a great day. Thank you so much.
That concludes the public comment portion for today's meeting.
Thank you very much. Items referred to committee.
Resolution 2025-0228 authorizing an amendment to the jail agreement with the city of Cleveland to amend the material's terms authorizing the county executive to execute the amendment.
I would like to call upon Chief of Staff Eric Janis for introductory remarks.
Thank you, Mr. President, members of the committee, members of council. Good afternoon, Eric Janis, Chief of Staff. I'm here today to express the administration's strong support for the proposed jail contract amendment. Jared Zibrikowski from Law is here to present to you the details of the negotiated amendment with the city of Cleveland. However, I wanted to take a moment to make just a few comments. First, I want to thank all the staff that worked to bring this amendment forward for your consideration. Brendan Doyle from the Executive's Office, Sheriff Patel and Chiefs Reese and Rivera from the Sheriff's Office, Dave Lambert and Brendan Healy from the Prosecutor's Office, Mike King on behalf of you all, Clerk Naella Byrd, Jared and Nate Hall from the Law Department. I want to say a special word of thanks to Rick Maniloff, our law director, who is taking some well-earned time off today and couldn't be here. But Rick has put in countless hours, constantly suggesting creative ideas and solutions to bring this amendment proposal to fruition. He's done exceptional work, and I wanted to acknowledge that here before you today. I also want to thank the city of Cleveland for negotiating earnestly and good faith. To Mayor Bibb and his team for prioritizing getting an agreement done. Public Safety Chief Drummond, Chief of Police Todd, and Law Director Mark Griffin, all deserve our thanks for their hard work. We are hopeful that Cleveland City Council will also approve this agreement. We support this amendment for one clear overriding reason. It significantly improves the systems of justice and public safety here in Cuyahoga County. This amendment affirms Cuyahoga County and Cleveland's shared commitment to central booking, widely seen as a best practice for jail management. As a result of this amendment, approximately 99% of Cleveland residents brought to our jail will see the contractual time to charge reduced from 36 to 12 hours. Nearly 60% of those cases will likely see charges accelerated, both because of Cleveland's commitment to investing in city prosecutors and because arresting officers are now required to stay until a charging decision is made. This agreement also increases the per diem that Cleveland will pay to house prisoners at our jail, and it will provide an automatic inflation escalator. Both of those are significant improvements over the terms of the current contract. This agreement is not perfect. We acknowledge that. We did not get everything we wanted in negotiations. However, it is a significant step forward. The administration knows that we must enforce the terms of the contract should you all choose to pass this, and measure the impact of those changes to ensure that a reduced number of hours any resident must spend in our custody. We're committed to doing so. Thank you. I'll now turn it over to Jared to present the details of the proposed amendment. After his presentation, I and Jared and several members of our staff will be here to answer any questions. Thank you.
Council President?
Yes.
The record reflect that Council Member Simon is in attendance.
Thank you very much. And before Jared begins his presentation, I would ask my colleagues, I have heard the presentation. It's succinct and relatively brief. I would ask that unless someone has a very important clarifying question that they need answered immediately, I would ask people to allow him to complete the whole presentation, and then we'll have plenty of time for questions and answers as needed. Thank you.
Thank you, Eric, and thank you, Council President Miller. My name is Jared Zibertowski, and I am Chief Counsel for Contracts and Transactions in the Law Department. I am here today to present this proposed first amendment to the jail agreement between the county and the city. And of course, I'll answer any questions that you might have. So before I begin, I think it's best to frame the purpose and address the limited scope of my presentation. The jail agreement and this proposed amendment are both important public documents affecting the lives of many of our citizens. And accordingly, I will focus on the terms of the amendment and encourage public discussion and debate on the merits of the amendment itself. I do and will advise some caution on the matter, especially in light of several active lawsuits concerning the county jail. So any comments or questions that veer toward matters concerning pending lawsuits or potential litigation are best left to privileged communications with legal counsel, as permitted by and in accordance with the Ohio Sunshine laws. So this amendment is the result of several months of extensive and considered negotiation with the city of Cleveland. The groups involved included the Sheriff's Department, the Clerk of Courts, the County Council, the County Prosecutor's Office, Cleveland City Prosecutor, and the Division of Cleveland Police. Mark Griffin, the city's law director, he led a formidable negotiating team from the city, and he proved to be a tough but fair partner in these negotiations. The city was committed to advocating for its own best interests. However, they were also able to find common ground to benefit our shared citizens. So in the most basic terms, this amendment benefits the county in two very important ways. First, the county will benefit financially by increasing the per diem rate from $99 per day to $143 a day. But more importantly, this amendment advances the administration of justice in Cuyahoga County by implementing a central booking program. It shortens the timeline under which the city may make charging decisions and will reduce the amount of time uncharged city prisoners spend in our jail. Central booking also lowers the jail population by decreasing the number of inmates addressed into the jail prior to being formally charged. This benefits Cuyahoga County and all of our citizens. So with that, here is our presentation. All right, so let's start at the beginning. In 2017, the city and the county entered into what we refer to commonly as the jail agreement, under which the county agreed to house city prisoners for $99 per day. In response to this agreement, the city decided to close its holding cells and jails. That is an important note because they now need a new place, or they needed a new place, to temporarily hold fresh arrests and uncharged suspects. This was resolved between the two parties by defining the term in the current jail agreement, city prisoners, to include uncharged arrestees in addition to inmates awaiting trial and inmates that are serving sentences from the Cleveland Municipal Court. The amendment that we're talking about today in front of you primarily is concerned with how we treat uncharged city prisoners and how they're processed throughout the jail. So I mentioned earlier that the county benefits financially. We do this by increasing the per diem rate from $99 a day to $143. But in addition to that initial increase, this amendment will automatically increase that rate by 2.5% every year. That is a new feature for this jail agreement. I think it's an important one financially. This is a significant improvement, but it's not the limit. The county can also request further increases above and beyond that automatic and annual 2.5% increase, which the city will consider under a new standard, which is under their reasonable discretion. That's a little bit of a better standard for the county. And I think, much more importantly, the second benefit, in addition to the financial advantages, is this amendment is a critical step forward in implementing countywide central booking. Central booking is a term that's been thrown around quite a bit recently. We want to define what it is. And the best textbook definition that we can find are process and protocols designed to bring many agencies and stakeholders involved in the charging and booking of arrestees together to achieve efficiencies and better serve those being brought into the criminal justice system, which I think is a mouthful. So what does that really mean? Well, what it means that we're going to, is we will take the most important criminal justice stakeholders. So think police officers, think detectives, think prosecutors. We're going to put them together in the charging process, and we're going to do that earlier and more efficiently than ever before. What that also means, then, is it means better communication between all of these parties, right? It means quicker charging decisions, less time spent in jail, and fewer inmates dressed into the general population. These are compelling and important concerns in the administration of justice, and they are all furthered by this amendment and its focus on central booking. As many of you know, central booking is a longstanding goal of our county, and we have invested both time and resources into creating a central booking area in the jail to accommodate this important process. And now, through this amendment, our jail's largest user agency, the city of Cleveland, is committing to participate in central booking. In fact, because of the negotiations on this amendment, the city has already taken official, verifiable steps to participate in central booking. They have changed their own laws to permit the hiring of four additional prosecutors to work central booking, and they are also hiring additional support staff for those prosecutors, again, to support central booking. We are also happy to report that they have funded and appropriated money for these brand-new positions in the city's budget already. So with these new resources and people, the city, under this amendment, they agree to double the amount of daily coverage in central booking, moving forward from eight hours, which is current, to 16 hours under this amendment. The city will also staff their central charging unit with detectives 24 hours a day, seven days a week, in order to further support this program. So all these new people and this money spent on them, what does it do? How do we advance the administration of justice here? Well, it means they're available for quicker charging decisions, right? They're going to have less people spending time in the county jail simply waiting to be charged. Some of these folks are often ultimately released without formal charges. This helps eliminate that. That's going to equate to less disruption in the lives of the suspects and fewer uncharged suspects sitting in jail. So how does this all work? Well, let's take a look at the current contract. Under the current contract, all uncharged city prisoners are turned over to county corrections staff, and their arresting officers are then immediately free to leave and then file reports, confer with prosecutors and detectives at a later date and time. Also, all of those uncharged prisoners, regardless of the level of their suspected offense, are booked into, or as we commonly refer to, dressed into, general population at the jail. And once again, all of those uncharged prisoners, again, with no regard to the seriousness of their suspected offenses, they may be detained in general population for up to 36 hours while the city decides either to formally charge them or to ultimately release them without charges. What we are proposing in this amendment is a different system, right? This system makes significant changes to how uncharged suspects are handled, and it abandons the one-size-fits-all approach in favor of a more tailored protocol for how these uncharged suspects are categorized and processed. So the first group, the most serious crimes, these are, these are people that are suspected of unclassified homicides or homicides or sexual assaults that are classified as felony ones or felony twos. That's going, this amendment maintains, my water, right there. This amendment maintains the status quo. So those folks will still be brought to the jail. Thank you. They'll still be dressed in and admitted to general population. The police officer can return to duty. The police officer can return to duty, but it's important to note that this is only 1% of all the uncharged suspects that are admitted to the jail currently. The second group under the new amendment are folks that are charged, or they're suspected, I should say, of felony ones, felony twos, and felony threes that are not unclassified homicides or sexual assaults. These folks will also still be dressed into population, but the arresting officer is not free to leave immediately. They have to remain in the central booking area until the booking is complete, and they also have to complete all their arrest paperwork. And most significantly for these folks is the time to charge drops from 36 hours to 12 hours. That is a big reduction in the amount of time that they're permitted to remain in the jail until a charging decision is made. The final group, this consists of uncharged city prisoners suspected of felony fours, felony fives, and any and all misdemeanors. For these folks, the process changes remarkably. These city prisoners will be brought to the jail, but they will not be dressed into general population. They will remain in what we call the central booking area until a charging decision is made, and they will remain there, you know, until that charging decision is made or for 12 hours, no longer than 12 hours. To facilitate that efficient charging, the police officer is required to remain in the central booking area. This way, the officer, you know, they can confer with the detectives, they can talk to the prosecutors, they'll be right there to provide instant, in-person feedback on, you know, why the suspect is here, what we suspect they did, and what charges we think we should file. So this group of the F4s and F5s, that equates 60% of all uncharged city prisoners currently dressed into the jail. So under this amendment, they will no longer be dressed into general population. They're going to be sitting in central booking rather than in general population. It's also important to note that the second group and this third group, that represents 99% of the uncharged suspects that we deal with from the City of Cleveland. We think that's a very important and compelling number. The rules for them are changing, and I think for the better. So as you might expect, anytime anyone from the Law Department is speaking, there are usually some exceptions and maybe notes to take. I'm going to get to those very quickly, the most important of which we like to refer to as the graveyard shift. So what we call the graveyard shift, this is an exception applicable from midnight to 8:00 a.m., so that's the time that the city prosecutors are not there, right? They're from 8:00 in the morning until midnight. From midnight to 8:00, they're not there, and they're not available for central booking. So during this time, all of the uncharged city prisoners will be dressed into general population, and the police officers do not have to remain on-site. So that's more akin to the status quo. However, the 12-hour limitation still applies from their time of admission for all but the most serious suspects, that's still 36 hours. Even during the graveyard shift, the charging decisions will be made as soon as practicable, which will resume at 8:00 a.m. when the city prosecutors return to booking, and they're going to prioritize, obviously, the work. So upon arriving at 8:00 a.m., if there's some folks that are in there that have been admitted since midnight, those are the cases that they're going to work first so that they can get those charging decisions made. Another note that I think is important is that, you know, this amendment is talking about setting hour limits of 12, 36. The actual wording in the amendment requires that these folks are charged as soon as practicable, which is hard to say but easy to understand. It means that they're going to be charged as soon as reasonably possible, given the circumstances. So, you know, they often, the police will need to do a little bit more research, the detectives might ask some questions, there may be interviews with witnesses or victims. That's all going to happen as soon as possible, and under those 12-hour limits, it has to happen before 12, or we can release those folks. And finally, I think it's important to note that this amendment helps to build on the communication between the sheriff and the police department. Recently, we have seen an increase in the communication between the two departments. It's been working very well. This, you know, codifies, well, it amends it and keeps it going. So we're pleased with that. And then, because we said we would keep short, here is our summary. I can say this, that in terms of the logistics and even the language of the amendment, it's mainly measuring hours, dollars, and how we categorize these uncharged suspects. But those are really just the tools that we're using to build something that I think is bigger and better, which is the central booking program. Central booking will bring all the right people to the right place at the right time, and the results will improve the administration of justice here in Cuyahoga County. I think all of those combined will create an environment for better communication, will result in quicker charging decisions, less time spent in jail by uncharged suspects, and fewer inmates dressed into the jail in general. Those four points are what this amendment really stands for, and I think that is better for all the citizens of Cuyahoga County. So with that, and after I take another drink, I'm happy to take your questions, and I thank you very much for listening.
Thank you very much for the presentation, and we had a first request from Councilman Kelly.
Thank you, Mr. President. So under your proposed amendment, charging protocols under the notes and exceptions at that page, if it's during the graveyard shift and somewhere between that midnight and 8:00 a.m., and it says there still is a 12-hour charging decision, is that 12 hours starting after 8:00 a.m.? Or, let's say they came in at 12:01, and then do they have less than four hours after 8:01?
No, thank you for that question. The timeline for that begins upon their admission. So if they're admitted at 1:00 in the morning, the 12-hour timeline begins at 1:00 in the morning. Just because there are not prosecutors present at the graveyard shift, there are going to be detectives, there will be supervisory police officers, there will be those arresting officers there initially with all the facts and circumstances. So the work can begin when they are admitted to the jail. Thank you.
Other questions or comments? Ms. Simon.
Thank you. So the 12-hour, I'm on the same page, actually, notes and exceptions with regard to coming in after midnight. So you're saying that the 12-hour charging requirement still exists, so if they come in at 1:00, they're going to have to charge within 12 hours?
Yes.
So why does it say charging decisions must, what's the outlier here, as soon as practicable?
Well, the "soon as practicable" is the actual standard that's used in the amendment, right? So the 12-hour, the 36-hour for the more serious crimes, those are the outer limits. In this amendment, the city is committing to make these charging decisions as soon as practicable. So that, in many cases, I believe, will be well beyond, will be well before 12 hours.
So not more than 12 hours, not more than 36. That's all this is?
Yes.
The worst case, hopefully.
Yes, those are the outer limits.
Got it, got it. In terms of central booking commitment that now they're hiring for people, why weren't they, I mean, you were in these negotiations, why was the City of Cleveland not compliant or cooperating with central booking since we've built it out when that was the plan?
Well, I don't think that I'm qualified to say why the city did or didn't do anything before, but I can tell you that under this amendment, they will be committed to central booking.
I want to hear from somebody why. I'm sure that was talked about in those meetings, because what's changed, you know? Good partners should have been participating in central booking before, and now we're expecting some change of behavior.
Thank you. Councilmember, good to see you. Truthfully, this was as far as Cleveland was willing to go in its negotiations. And so while we asked for consideration of doing it in the graveyard shift, this is what they were willing to do in this amendment. We accept that that is better than the current circumstances. We look forward to measuring how successful it is, holding to that standard, and seeing if there's a future argument for extending it beyond the midnight timeline.
So why weren't they participating in central booking? Why aren't they now?
I can't speak to why they aren't. This amendment, though, commits them to it, and that's the first thing.
Did you guys talk about that? I mean, that's integral to this amendment, obviously, as there hasn't been partnership, cooperation with central booking when most of these individuals who would benefit from it are City of Cleveland arrestees. So, but nobody can say, at least at this day and age, why?
That's a question best put to the City of Cleveland leadership. We do know that under Mayor Bibb, he set the expectation that we would come to a negotiated settlement. We think this is much better than the current standard.
I know. Okay. I'm not done with pursuing that question, because I have doubts about the cooperation happening now and what's changed, but go ahead. Thank you.
Any other questions or comments? I have a couple to follow up on Councilman Kelly's questions about the graveyard shift. Is a detective authorized to charge, or can only a prosecutor actually charge an inmate?
I also don't think that I am qualified to represent what the city or how their policies or protocols work for the Cleveland Police Department, but I do know that they have a preference for prosecutors to be there, and that's why they're doubling the coverage that they provide in central booking.
Good afternoon, Councilor Sheriff Patel. On that topic, detectives prepare the charges and the prosecutor reviews, because they're the ones that are going to be taking the case forward and asserting whatever the appropriate elements are. So the detective's job is conduct the investigation, put it together, make sure the elements are matching what the offense were, present those to the prosecutor for concurrence, then the prosecutor levels the charges.
Thank you. Can you say a little bit more about the legal meaning of the term reasonable discretion?
Sure. Reasonable discretion imparts into this decision-making a reasonable element. So under the current contract, if we were to ask for an increase that currently is capped at 2% on its face from the city, they right now have an incredible amount of discretion, whether to accept that request or deny it. The reasonable discretion plays into the idea that, you know, they still get to decide, but it is subject to a reasonableness standard that's common in law. So what would a reasonable person accept as, you know, this, they have supported their claim for the need to increase it, the per diem, by providing these documents? They're going to be held to that standard if it ever became an issue in court.
What plans does the administration have to keep track of how quickly people are charged so that we can track whether the terms of the agreement are being complied with or not?
Good afternoon, Mr. President, again, Sheriff Patel. We intend to track all the different metrics relative to this, not only the arrival time of the officers, how long the officers spend here, how long medical assessment takes, how long the booking process takes, and probably most importantly here, how long the charging and subsequent release of the resident's going to take. So we're going to compile those metrics, and we're free to share those with council on a regular basis so we know how well we're progressing under the new agreement.
Thank you. Other comments or questions? Councilman Sweeney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Thank you for your presentation and working through your scratchy throat. I just, I'm going to go over the presentation a little bit. On Dale's reasonable, I had that one underlined through the chair. What the likelihood of this amendment, if it breaks down, going to court? Either one of us has the ability to say, "I'm taking you to court because you didn't follow the amendment to the contract."
Well, the terms of this amendment do not change any of those rights or responsibilities under the contract itself. It's basically setting out the new hour limitations and, you know, creating these categorical divisions upon these uncharged suspects. It doesn't increase or decrease.
Through the chair, it's very unlikely it's ever going to go to court. Would that be accurate?
I don't know. I know this. I know that they came to the table, we were able to negotiate with them. It took a long time, it took a lot of work, they were there in good faith. I think that they are going to stick by the agreement that they have struck.
Okay, so that was my whole thought process of my question, is how enforceable this is? Just with the central booking, what does it look like right now? As you said, it's not up and running, and...
Well, what it looks like is there is an incredible space that we built out in the jail just beyond the Sally Port. That's been ready for this type of commitment for some time, and we think that right now, with this new amendment, it's going to be used properly.
And my question is, who's going to build it out?
It already is built out. We built it out several years ago.
It's already built out, and the city computers and all that are there?
Through the chair, to the councilman, Sheriff Patel here. That started a few years ago. We started this whole central booking project with the City of Cleveland and all the stakeholders, and we did put everything into place. There's furniture there, computers there, there's access. It's just a matter of making sure everyone's in place and that the system is working.
Good, so through the chair, my thought was, since it's dormant, there's going to be a cost to get it up and operating. You're saying it's ready to go as soon as they come in?
Through the chair, through the councilman, yes, sir. Perfectly.
Stakes tap for the pre-amendment. You said something about doubling? What was that?
Sure. What doubles under this new amendment is the amount of coverage that prosecutors from the city are available to the detectives and to the police officers. They're currently available for a standard eight-hour shift. Under this amendment, that doubles to 16 hours.
And just on the theme of the graveyard shift, how about they come in at 9:00 p.m.? Are they guaranteed to be seen by midnight?
If they come in at 9:00 p.m., the standard rules, the standard new rules would apply, the 12 hours, they would be, you know, entered into the charging area where they would remain at 9:00 p.m., and then also the officer would have to remain until the charging decision is complete.
Then you hit the graveyard shift, then you got 12 hours, or eight hours.
The graveyard shift's at midnight. Those rules...
If you get there at, say, 7:00, and you're not done by 12, and you have eight more hours...
By terms of the contract, it's, they're treated the same as to what the sheriff will do or how the protocol or policy will handle it. I turn it over to the sheriff.
Through the council chair, to the councilman, someone coming in at 7:00 p.m. or 9:00 p.m., there are still detectives and prosecutors from the city onboard, so they can review the cases and issue the charges, and then, once that's done, well before midnight, then we would just process them out.
And through the chair, to our sheriff, how about that doesn't, though? I mean, you're saying it's five hours, like it's guaranteed, right? Because we can do it in five hours, and why aren't we at five hours? You know, we get 12 hours to process, and I'm just curious if it's seven o'clock, so we're guaranteeing they'll be out by midnight.
Through the chair, to the councilman, guaranteed that the process will start, and we're not waiting on a decision. If they come in at 7:00 p.m., the detective is onboard, the officer's onboard, prosecutor's onboard, paperwork has started, they may be released at 3:00, 4:00 in the morning. At a maximum, it'll be 7:00 a.m. the next morning, at a maximum. But we know that the process has started, they got those components already completed, and they should be out certainly during the night.
And through the chair, so you're saying during midnight and 8:00 p.m., work can be done?
Between midnight, yes, if it started earlier. If they walk in at midnight, there is no prosecutor, so the detectives can do their part, but the consultation with the prosecutor will take place after 8:00 a.m. So that's for a midnight arrival. For an earlier arrival, that could all take place before midnight, so it's just a matter of us doing the paperwork and the processing internally, so it'll be on the sheriff's department at that point.
And through the chair, now I understand it, it's the prosecutors do their work upfront between the first period of time, and after it's all done, the other work will be done, and they can get out before midnight.
Yes, sir.
Okay, and then with the, how about they don't do the 12, we talked in the executive session briefly, if they miss the 12 hours, or there needs more time, what happens?
Through the chair, to the councilman.
Can they go past 12 hours under certain situations?
Through the chair, to the councilman, if there is a special situation like that, we work closely with the prosecutor and the charging investigators, but the contract speaks to 12-hour limits. So that is something that we know is something we're going to adhere to. Again, if it's a very special situation, we're likely to be one-offs, but the standard is going to be the 12-hour release.
And through the chair, I'm asking very specifically, though, if you get to the 12 hours, and it's, you need to keep them, or are they going to be released at the 12-hour moment? moment?
Through the chair, to the councilman, certain charges, certainly we know the sexual offenses, homicides, et cetera, those higher charges, we're going to maintain to 36. For a regular offense, that's going to be a 12-hour window on that, they'll be released.
And through the, yeah, so it's a hard 12.
Through the chair, to the councilman, hard 12 with minor exceptions for very special situations, as we can think of off the top of my head, if there's a crime spree, and we know that this individual is the person, and the detectives are collecting some evidence and fingerprints before charging, I think we can afford to wait on that.
And through the chair, and the sheriff, the highest ranking sheriff department person would make that call?
That would be, through the chair, to the councilman, that would be something done within corrections, and Chief Rivera or someone on his staff would make that call.
Through the sheriff's department though?
Yes.
I have the faith and confidence in you, but I'm just trying to, if somebody says 12 hours, it's 13, we've got to deal with what happened, but right now, under a rare set of circumstances, the sheriff's department can make a call to exceed the 12 hours, but our hope is to stay within the 12 hours.
Through the chair, the councilman, that is well characterized. Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay. Guess what? I'm done. Thank you very much for putting up with me, but I got a clearer picture, and you do a great job, Sheriff, Law Department worked hard putting this together, and I'm thankful for that. We got an improved amendment now.
Councilman Kelly?
Thank you. My question would be is if there's an outstanding warrant on the individual that Cleveland brings in, they're going to do their charging, they charge them, but yet there's a holder from another department. You give that department a chance to come and get them, but if it looks like it's going to take too long for them to arrive, do you have an idea how you're going to handle that?
Through the chair, to the councilman, no different than we currently do. Many departments either give you a timeline or tell you what is the offense, what's the offender, warn and send them. We're not going to come all the way from Illyria or whatever to pick them up. In some cases, they'll say, "Yes, we'll be there within X amount of time, we'll be there before 6:00 AM, or we'll be there as soon as shift change takes place." The important part that's addressed in this amendment is the fact that the charging component for the original arrest charged by the Cleveland police officers, that will be addressed. And then obviously, the outstanding warrant at another municipality, that's another stage, that's another step. That currently takes place around the country on a daily basis and will follow those protocols.
I think maybe what my question entailed, I didn't probably say it correctly, was so if you have someone that Cleveland is charging, and you're going to be able to get them out of there, they're not necessarily dressed in to the facility, but if there's a holder on them and Cleveland's done with them, will they be dressed in at that point and take, or how would they be held until the other agency arrives?
Through the chair, to the councilman, no different than we currently do, sir. It's unlikely we dress them in because now we know that the city of X is going to be here to pick them up or not, then they just get released. But the contract speaks to the 12-hour limitation for Cleveland arrests. At that point, the Cleveland charge has been mitigated, now we're just waiting for the holder in the outside city, and it will be dependent on their conversation with them, how long it'll take them to come pick them up, or they may not want to pick them up. But to answer your question, sir, we'll wait and see what we work out with the other city as far as their timeline on picking them up.
Got it. Thank you.
Yes, sir.
So, a couple of follow-up questions on Councilman Sweeney's questions. Suppose there's a dispute about the contract. Is there a dispute resolution process that falls short of going to court where we just work with the city of Cleveland? How does that process work?
Yes, thank you for the question. This amendment does not change the current dispute resolution terms that currently exist in the jail agreement, and those begin with sitting down, talking to the city, and they escalate then accordingly.
Second question is, suppose you have a person that's in the third category, the four or five felony or misdemeanor, and they come in at 11 o'clock, which is before the graveyard shift, but it's not enough time for them to confer with the prosecutor and make a charging decision by midnight. In that case, under the agreement, is the officer allowed to leave at midnight, or is the officer required to remain on the scene until the charging is completed under the terms of the agreement because they arrived before the graveyard shift?
Sure, and thank you for the question. I think this is going to be a two-part answer. I'll start with the legal part. Under the amendment, the rule remains the same, whether it's 11 o'clock or 11:30. If it's before midnight, the 12-hour restriction works, the not getting dressed in works, the officer is going to remain. I will defer to the sheriff's office as to what kind of protocols and policies they're going to put in place to address that situation, but the legal terms of the amendment are clear, that at 11:00, it's the same rules as applied prior to midnight.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Jared. Mr. Councilman, that's something where if they came in and there was insufficient time to conduct the consultation with the prosecutor, I think our policies would allow, we don't expect reasonably, the officers to stay there till 0800, it just doesn't make sense, but I think our policies would allow for them to do what they have to do ahead of time, fill out any charging papers. There will be detectives there, so at that point, it will be incumbent upon the detectives to make the consultation at 8:00 in the morning. Again, unlikely to expect, unrealistic to expect this officer to spend the whole night just in a holding pattern when there's going to be no consultation until 8:00 in the morning.
Councilman Sweeney?
Just very briefly, in regards to the data collection?
Yes.
You're going to take that upon yourself as the sheriff's department?
Yes.
You have staff doing it. It could be a lot of work, and I know how understaffed you are. I'm just making a point, you're taking on more right now with a staffing level that you need more folks. So, I just want to commend you for that, but just make a realization that you might need more to do this right, because you don't want to take Rob Peter for Paul to be able to get this done, and I don't know how you're going to... Can you handle it? Or, because I don't want you coming up short.
Through the council chair, to the councilman, thank you, sir. That's a very good point. We are going to have to make that work. In the short term, it'll take additional, it's always take additional staffing. We're looking through to our new jail management system. When that's onboard, maybe 14 to 18 months away, when that's onboard, that will obviously speed it up, but in the short term, it will take additional staff, and we will be Robin Peter to pay Paul to make sure that functions. But that is an absolute core component of this, is being able to have the metrics so we know what we're speaking to in the future.
Thank you. I just, if it's working or not. So, thank you, Mr. President, and I just wanted to bring...
Other questions or comments, Ms. Simon?
Sure, thank you. Is there a mandatory ADR dispute provision in the contract that would mandate discussion with the city? I think that's what you said would happen if there's a contract issue.
I don't know if it's under the ADR, but there is a dispute resolution provision.
So, there's a mandate that the parties...
Yes, it starts with a discussion and it progresses.
With mediation or just, they just need...
Mediation is one step in that prior to a lawsuit, yes.
Mandatory.
Let me check.
Okay, don't come back. We'll look later. So, once this data collection is complete, monthly, weekly, what's going to happen with that data? Will that go to the law department? Will you report someplace so we know what's happening with compliance with the contract?
Through the chair, to the councilman, we will tabulate that and share that with council and executives team on a regular basis so you know what's working and what's not, but it'll also be shared with the law department in the event we have to take some action. It's just a normal course of business. We should know what the processes are in our facility, what times are taken, where the efficiencies are, and where the needs are. So, that's where we're going to keep track of that.
So, if the officers leave before the 12-hour mandate, what do you do? I mean, where does that fall? I mean, we become police of the police?
Through the chair, to the councilman, the officers can leave before the 12-hour mandate as long as the process is completed and the charging is done.
I know, but what if they just take off? There's an emergency, you know, someplace else. Let's say we're in Garfield and there's a problem in Cleveland, and they have to leave. So, are we, what do we do? Say you can't leave or see you later? We're just going to give you a, you know, poor grade? What, I mean, have you thought that out? I mean, I'm sure you have. I don't mean to be condescending.
Through the chairman, to the councilwoman, we have thought through that. We're not going to hold anyone against their will, and it's unlikely that will occur, but in that situation, the shift supervisor for the jail will reach out to the, probably the shift captain for that police district, and inform them their car needs to return to complete the charging process for this individual, and we will keep a track of those occurrences, and that'll be part of our report.
And so, then it falls on us to determine whether we're just going to release somebody if the officer leaves outside of the 12 mandated hours, and then we have to make a decision whether we're going to just unleash this person back onto the street or keep them? I mean, that falls on us, right?
Through the chair, to the councilman, yes, at that point, if there is no compliance and we don't have the appropriate charges at the 12-hour mark, we will release the individual.
No matter what?
Through the chair, to the councilman, very similar to previous questions, there may be some very rare exceptions, but as a matter of course, that is the intention of the contract and of our process.
So, when we get to Garfield, that's just opening up the door and catch the bus? It just falls on us, that's all. I can just picture this, that if they're not complying, there's a breach, you know, at the end of the day, we're responsible for these people, so, not legally, but it's just a mess, I think. I envision this, if we don't have a fair partnership, that this becomes a burden on us and the arrestees. I guess it's more an editorial comment. I hope it works. It's better than what we have.
Through the chair, the councilman, it is better, and I think that there's an expectation at the executive level that if the executives make an agreement on this contract, that the people doing the work will execute it as such, and if not, there's going to be some sanctions coming down.
What kind of sanctions? I mean, it looks like we have to give notice, we have to go through the rescission process. It's pretty much what we're going to have to do if there's a breach.
Through the chair, to the councilman, initial sanctions would be that the, say, police captain reach out to the police officer and get his officer's back, maybe have some sort of disciplinary sanction, and as a matter of course, as we tabulate these and keep track, if we have a lot of these incidents, then that's going to go to the law department to speak to the Cleveland law department and see what they can work out there. That's why we're, that's the biggest part of us, keeping these metrics.
Was the prosecutor in the room from the city of Cleveland when you were negotiating this, and was there buy-in from that prosecutor?
Through the chair, the councilperson, they were all present at different times, yes.
Clerk Byrd has a lot to say, and I'm wondering through the chair if she can have a chance to come to the mic because she is a wealth of information.
Thank you, Councilwoman Neila Byrd, Clerk of Court. To answer your question specifically, Councilwoman Simon, the Aquila Jordan, the city of Cleveland prosecutor, as well as her boss, the law director, Mark Griffin, were present for all of the negotiations that I was present for with the law department, so they are onboard. I had a lot of other answers, but they answered them.
Next time.
Thank you. How many police officers staying with the inmates now?
Currently, none. The police officers are arriving with the suspects, they are getting them put through booking, and they're leaving immediately.
Under this amendment, if we get one police officer to stay, then we've done better than we've done in the years past.
I think so, yes.
So, I think it's an improvement. Can you tell us what the actual procedure is for the police officers when they do stay or if they should leave? So, they say if they do leave, we document it. When does the next negotiation come up? When do we negotiate again for this agreement?
Well, I think in the case of a one-off, if an officer is leaving prior to the charging decision made, that's going to be handled as previously discussed, the sheriff's or the sheriff's department will talk to Cleveland Police Department. If that becomes a recurring issue, more of a pattern or practice, then we will be notified by the sheriff's office, and we will start to talk, at least with the city, you know, rather quickly on that matter.
I'm sorry, I think I missed that. How far, a year or two years?
There is no timeline for another negotiation. This is the contract we've negotiated for three, four months now. This is what we have in front of us. There's nothing further planned at this time, but, you know, as a result of these negotiations, we have a very good working relationship with Mark at the law department for the city. We have a really good relationship, you know, that we will build on and continue to build on from here on, if we have any problems like that.
Assuming passage or if this passes, when does implementation begin?
Check with me.
It's 90 days. It's 90 days for central booking.
Assistant Law Director Nate Hall, he has an even better...
Sorry, Nate Hall, Law Department. The commitment to begin central booking, I believe, is 90 days from the effective date.
Mr. Hall, if you could speak directly into the microphone?
Apologies. Nate Hall, Law Department. The city's commitment to participate in central booking begins 90 days from the effective date, so that would be after passage by both councils. The new per diem goes into effect on January 1 of 2026.
Has the city of Cleveland scheduled their vote yet?
So, I can tell you that the Cleveland City Council meets for an all-day session a couple days after our final meeting on August 5th, and they might try to deal with it in one day, or they might start and hold it till a later meeting.
Council President, if I may add to that, it has been introduced and referred to committee, and the co-sponsors of the bill were the council president and the safety chair.
Any other questions? Councilman Gallagher?
Hopefully to wrap this up, I'm listening to my colleagues asking some really good questions, and questions that we've been asking for years. How long have we been working on this with the city of Cleveland? How many years?
Well, the original agreement was in effect since 2017. We have been in these negotiations since, I think, early March of this year that have yielded this amendment.
Previous administrations also have been talking to Cleveland about this. When we realized it was a bad deal, that hole we dug, to be fair, this is, you know, our hole that we dug. How we got here, we haven't really even gotten the full story, and I don't think we will. But I heard somebody mention that we have a good relationship with the city of Cleveland Law Department. It wouldn't take years to get this fixed. It wouldn't take years to get this agreement, and I know a lot of hard work was put in by you and Mr. Doyle and the administration just to get Cleveland to the table on this. We are an institution within, of the county, that has put hundreds of millions of dollars, of tax dollars, into the city of Cleveland. Medical Mart, the convention center, the hotel, it just goes on and on, revitalizing literally a dead area of downtown Cleveland by moving our headquarters here and turning really a wasteland into something that everybody can be proud of, understanding we dug this hole, but it should be easier to get Cleveland to the table. And when I hear statements such as, "The mayor's gone as far as he's going to go," okay, I'm going to remember that, and I hope people in the county remember that. We're here to help. The initial contract was to help Cleveland, was to help other communities, not to hurt them. I'm on record saying numerous times, when they were fighting over the cost, I said, "We're not here to take money from you. We don't want you to lose money, but we don't want to lose money either, so we got to find that sweet spot." We thought we found it, we didn't, because we literally didn't know what was in the contract. So, I'm hopeful that this is a first step in repairing what I think is, should be a very close relationship with the city of Cleveland and the county going forward, because from our end of it, we have done nothing in my 15 years, done nothing but provide, provide new spaces, new buildings, new jobs. We've helped everybody out, but somehow we got to this, and it became a little bit push and tug, and it shouldn't have been there. And it shouldn't have been there. And I don't know if that's on our side or if it's on Cleveland's side. But since this administration's been in and put the pedal to the metal on this, and I appreciate all the effort that was done, it just seems that we were the one pushing, not pulling. And we need to be tugging in the same direction. So I hope the message to Cleveland, if indeed they do accept this, is that we're kind of all in this together. We say that a lot. And we put our money where our mouth is a lot, and we'll continue to do that. So I think all we're looking at is a fair balance. And I'm sure you wanted a fair balance. But there's some things said here today that I think should be remembered, because they're going to need us far more than we're going to need them. We're a little bit bigger, we have a little bit more access. Proof of the pudding is, we carried the note for the ballpark and the arena. I still can't figure out how we did that. But we did, without very many questions. So from our perspective, my perspective, is that the county's always been there to help Cleveland. And when we dug this hole, we went to them and asked, "Could we get out of this hole?" And I'm hearing things like, "Well, I've gone as far as I'm going to go." I hope that's not true. I hope that was just said in passing. Because I think we're open about helping Cleveland and any other community in the county, as I hope they're looking forward to working with us in a real positive manner.
Councilmember, I appreciate your comments. The context for which the city said this, "As far as we're willing to go," which is for this First Amendment. It is our hope and expectation that, as the sheriff said, we are going to properly track this, we're going to hold them to account, and we're going to see how this works. And there are mechanisms in this, there are mechanisms in this contract that still remain that allow us to negotiate areas of conflict. But it is my hope, I think it is everyone's hope, that this works well and that we can further the discussion about how to make it even better if we need to amend down the road. But we're taking it one step at a time.
And I know you've put a lot of time in. Brennan's put a lot of time in. He went from gray to white overnight, it seems. And I appreciate all that. And I really appreciate the fact that Cleveland is there working with us. I really do. Because that's the way it should be. But we'll see how it goes. I'm hopeful, and I pray that it does work out. And, you know, we can set the path going forward, because the past wasn't very good. And this seems to be moving us a little bit forward. But again, not ideal, but again, we dug the hole, so.
We aspire to the same, Councilmember. Thank you.
So I agree that this is clearly a step in the right direction and that cooperation and negotiation are good things. And seeing no further discussion, is there a motion to move this resolution to the full council for second reading?
I make a motion that we move this to the full council for second reading.
Been moved and seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor, say aye. Aye. Any opposed? The resolution is recommended to the full council for second reading tonight, and then it would be up for final passage on August 5. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Resolution 2025-0235, confirming the county executive's appointment of Anthony W. Scott upon his taking the oath of office as Director of Housing and Community Development.
Welcome to the confirmation hearing at which council will consider the appointment of Anthony W. Scott as Director of the Department of Housing and Community Development. For a little background, the Department of Housing and Community Development is a newly created department introduced by County Executive Chris Ronaine on March 14, 2023. The Department of Housing and Community Development will focus on affordable housing development, support for the unhoused, and programs to assist with housing ownership and maintenance. The hearing will proceed as follows. The nominee will be offered the opportunity to address his qualifications, motivations for seeking the position, and outlooks and plans regarding the office. Council members will then be offered the opportunity to ask questions of the nominee. I don't think we have to be strict in allowing council members only two questions per round, but I would ask that if anybody has a long list of questions, we'll ask a few of them and then say, "I'll come back later." Once all questions have been asked, we will entertain a motion to recommend that the council move the legislation for second reading at tonight's council meeting, and then to ultimately approve or reject the nomination at the August 5 council meeting. So the legislation has already been read into the record, so I would ask Mr. Scott to make his opening presentation.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Council President, Councilmembers. My name is Tony Scott, for the record. And I thank you for the opportunity to appear before you today and for your thoughtful consideration of my nomination. I'd like to begin by expressing my gratitude to County Executive Chris Ronaine for the confidence he's placed in me, and to the members of the selection committee who recognized potential and recognized my potential and brought my name forward. I'm truly honored to be here. I also want to sincerely thank Director Sarah Parks Jackson, not just for her outstanding leadership over the past two years as the first director in this role, but for the time she's already spent helping me understand the structure, the priority, and operations of this department. Her insights have been invaluable, and if confirmed by this honorable body, I intend to hit the ground running on day one because of the roadmap she and her team have helped establish. She's shown an unprecedented level of professionalism and grace towards me over the last few weeks, and I truly appreciate it. My goal is not to start over, but to honor and build upon this department's existing momentum. So who am I? Why do I want this role, and why am I qualified? Honestly, I'm just a local homeboy who did good. Born in Cleveland, a proud East Cleveland native thereafter and graduate of Shaw High School, served in the United States Marine Corps for eight years, served during Operation Urah, served during Operations Desert Storm, Desert Shield, Endure Hope, and Endure Freedom. That experience instilled in me the discipline, focus, and sense of duty that continue to guide me to this very day. After receiving my honorable discharge, I came back here to Cleveland, worked as many as three jobs at a time while attending school, and earned my bachelor's degree in English, my master's in public administration, and my Juris Doctor from Cleveland State University College of Law. For more than a decade, I've served in various leadership roles within the city of Cleveland. I began as an attorney in the Department of Law's code compliance, where you have my resume in front of you, but to point out, the majority of my time was spent dealing with housing code violations. Thereafter, I moved into the administrative role of, administrative role, excuse me, within Department of Public Safety, Assistant Director of Building and Housing, Commissioner of Park Maintenance and Property, and then my current role as the Assistant Director of Community Development. I've heard citizens' stories, answered their calls, reduced hurdles and bureaucracy as much as possible. I care about these citizens, that could be my family or any of yours. It's been paramount for me and shall continue to be paramount that I be a voice for the citizens inside of the system. I strive to build systems that are efficient and empathetic. I believe in mentorship, developing high-performing teams, and implementing data-driven strategies that drive innovation, but more importantly, transparency. My strengths include problem-solving, strong communication skills, project management, building strategic partnerships, and most importantly, managing those relationships. I'm passionate about sound governance and believe in accountability, measured both in numbers but in lived community outcomes. At the core of my vision, my guiding light, is the belief that stable, dignified housing is a fundamental human right. It is not, nor should it ever be, a privilege. It's the foundation, excuse me, upon which people build their lives. It's where health, safety, and opportunity begin. If someone does not feel safe and secure in their own home, they will never reach their full actualization. And that opportunity is something that everyone deserves. As a first-generation college and law school graduate, I know what it's like to navigate systems without a roadmap, much like our citizens, many of our citizens at least. I learned a poem called "If" during my initiation into Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. One verse always resonates with me to this day. "If I can walk with kings, nor lose my common touch." That's humility. My humble beginnings will always keep me grounded and guide all that I do in being equitable. Equitable for me is not just a buzzword, it is a guiding principle. We must focus on opportunities for our most vulnerable residents. Those returning from incarceration are elders, individuals experiencing homelessness, and those struggling with addiction and/or mental illness. They deserve dignity, stability, and support. I've intimately known and experienced many of these challenges through my family, friends, and at times myself. I will not lose, excuse me, it's very important to get this correct, I will not lose sight of the humanity in the citizens that we all serve. I also deeply believe in building strong partnerships locally, regionally, across the state of Ohio and nationally. We don't have to reinvent the wheel to solve complex problems. I look forward to collaborating with thought partners who are already identifying and addressing similar issues so that we can share, learn, and implement best practices together. This includes working across all 59 Cuyahoga County communities, as well as obviously with this honorable body. But I want to be clear, it's not just about working with our elected officials, but with the business leaders, the faith-based institutions, and nonprofit partners. We have to engage our full ecosystem to address housing shortages, one household, one neighborhood at a time. Outside of government, I remain deeply involved in mentorship, nonprofit leadership, and authorship. I'm a proud member, as I stated before, of Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. I served within the Zeta Omega Foundation, NAACP, Black Professional Association, Charitable Foundation, and I'm honored to serve as the mentoring chairman for the Norman S. Minor Bar Association. I recently became a twice-published author, and I'm passionate about speaking on topics such as professionalism, networking, maintaining your authenticity in the workspace, as well as understanding the distinction in the roles of a manager and a leader. I strive to use every platform accessible to me in my nine-to-five and in my five-to-nine to try to uplift others and help them find their voice and their path forward. So as I close, I want to reiterate that it's clear that Department of Housing and Community Development has accomplished a great deal in a short time. If confirmed by this honorable body, I'm committed to building on that progress. We will work to expand access, deepen our impact, and ensure that no community's needs go unhurt. Thank you again for this opportunity, for your thoughtful consideration of my nomination. I'm ready to serve and honored to be considered, and I now welcome your questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much for your presentation. I'd like to congratulate you on your nomination and willingness to serve, and I look to see who would like to be recognized first.
Thank you, sir.
I'll give it a shot.
Councilman Swinney.
Thank you, Mr. President. Welcome aboard.
To the chair, to the councilman. Thank you, sir.
I have no questions other than reflection. I talked to three of my top confidants, and here are their answers. He's a good one, rock solid, and you don't have to worry about him. So you got nothing to worry about me, you got my support, but I do have one very specific question through the chair.
Yes, sir.
What does a W stand for?
I was told I was going to say that, thankfully, to the chair, to the councilman. Thankfully, I'm at that age that I'm annoyingly transparent, so it's Willard. It was my grandfather's name, Anthony, I'm Anthony Willard Scott, he was Willard Talbot Scott.
And I'm named after my grandfather, so family traditions are good. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much.
Tell me I was coming.
Yes, Ms. Conwell.
I threw the chair to Mr. Tony Scott. If this position was not available or open, would you say you would still be at the city of Cleveland right now?
To the chair, to the councilwoman, that is an excellent question. It was my network that brought this position to my attention, and even then, I did not immediately jump on it. We are, the community development ecosystem across the nation right now is in a very challenging space. And Cleveland's community development is not a stranger to that, based off of the fiscal allocations that we get from the federal government. So it made a lot of things difficult. Applying for this was difficult, and if elected, it is bittersweet. And I've shared that with my staff, because I've been with the city of Cleveland all that time. But it's not so much the city of Cleveland as an entity that I'm loyal to. I'm loyal to the citizens that we serve and to the staff that I protect. As a Marine, I tell them, "I'm going to get in front of you, I'm going to take the bullets, and I'm going to take you out to the woodshed afterwards and get it right." And so I do, that's the regret. There's things that I would have still liked to have finished, even in the midst of storms. But I'd be remiss if I didn't step into this opportunity and realize that it allows me to be more impactful across a wider diaspora than just the city of Cleveland.
So to continue, so the relationship with the city of Cleveland, still good, because we do, we have many, Sarah works with the city of Cleveland on a regular basis, and there's, I represent Cleveland, and some of my colleagues represent parts of Cleveland. So I just wanted to make sure that was a good relationship still going forward with everybody.
To the chair, to the councilwoman, to my knowledge, before the offer was extended, I shared it with my director. She immediately that day wrote a recommendation, and then I got the offer the next day. I thought it was in large part to her email, she hadn't even sent it yet. So, and as soon as I did get the offer, I shared with my staff first, because I didn't want them to see it as it was presented in media. And I shared that with His Honor Mayor Bibb and the Chiefs Davy Poyente and my Direct Chief, Chief Jeff Epstein, all via communication before they found out from external sources.
Okay, one final question. So I'm assuming, having looked at the dates really well, but I know former Mayor Jackson was in there a long time, so you came in under his leadership?
To the chair, yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Honored to serve.
Councilman Kelly, followed by Castleberry. I'm sorry.
All right.
Did you have an additional question?
I do.
You do?
I have a question, yes. Thank you. First of all, I want to thank you for your service to our country.
To the chair, to the councilman. Thank you, sir.
And being in some really tough times, so thanks again for that.
Thank you, sir.
So you've been with Cleveland, there's 59 communities in Cuyahoga County. How would you be able to partner with the different types of communities that we have throughout the entire county?
To the chair, to the councilman, I appreciate that question. Honestly, I don't believe my philosophy is going to change. And what I mean by that is, we may say the term Cleveland, but Cleveland is broken up into, as you know, 17 wards. It's broken up beyond that into neighborhoods, streets, and homes. Each of those have unique needs. So I believe very much in stakeholder engagement from the top down and from the bottom up. It's going to be imperative. It'll be challenging, don't get me wrong. It'll involve mastery of time management and scheduling, but I want to get to understand the stakeholders in each of those respective communities so that I can better understand what their wants and needs are. Obviously, I'm not going to be able to satisfy all their wants, but I at least want to hear them and see how we can figure out how to partner, not just from within this building, but with our financial institutions, as I mentioned earlier, our faith-based community neighborhood block cubs. What kind of opportunities exist for them to be more empowered, to aid us in the development and the providing of affordable housing? and the providing of affordable housing opportunities? So that's no different than how I treated the City of Cleveland in any of my roles where I had to serve on the east side and the west side or any respective role, any respective ward. It's really try to engage each community, each culture separately, and respect what they believe they need and try to support them in that.
So there, there was the seventeen wards that you talked about, and we have eleven council districts.
Yes.
Include a lot of communities that are very different.
Yes, sir.
From the areas that you're used to. I'll look forward to see how you handle those relationships with those communities.
Yes, sir. To the chair, to the councilman, I look forward to all of your help navigating those respective communities.
Thank you.
Councilman Castleberry.
Thank you, Council President Miller, through the chair. And thank you, Mr. Scott, for being here today. I too would like to thank you for your service to our country. I have a son that's spent eighteen years in the Army, and a lot of just graduated from law school. And I see the dedication, what it's taken each of them to go through those, you know, each of their chosen fields, and for you to do both, very impressive. I want to, so I have no doubt that you have the work ethic and determination to do this job. So I do just have one question. I see County Executive Renee has a goal to eliminate, reduce our homelessness by twenty-five percent in two thousand twenty-seven.
Yes, sir.
Being the summer, we start to see more, you know, it becomes more noticeable, I think, you see people out. So do you see that as a realistic goal? And do you have plans, you think that you can, your department will be able to implement the strategy to achieve that?
To the chair, to the councilman. I look at any reduction as an improvement because, as I mentioned, both quantitative and qualitative measures, even if we were not to hit that rate, and I don't know if we can at this point, seeing as I don't presently work for the county. But even if we don't, I think the continuous effort and the lives of the people who are able to be improved, not just being able to get into sustainable and affordable housing, but the workforce development, the substance abuse, the financial management, all those things that you need to be successful to operate within our respective society. I think that's gonna be incumbent upon myself and colleagues, both within the county and outside of the county, to try to work to accomplish that goal and more. It wasn't, this is twenty twenty-five, it didn't come to exist in two years, and it's not gonna be eradicated, but we should continue to make measurable and incremental quantitative and qualitative progress towards that. So in summation, it's the collaboration with everybody that goes towards putting people into sustainable housing, not just the house itself, not whether it's immediate, temporary, short-term, long-term. But again, what you need to return to society to ultimately become self-actualized and fulfilled.
Thank you very much. Appreciate that answer.
To the chair, thank you, sir.
Yes, Councilman Hauser.
Excellent question.
Chairman of the Community Development.
Yeah, excellent question, Councilman. To piggyback on that, Tony, how do you see the Office of Housing, the Office of Housing working with our different county departments? Whether it's the Office of Homelessness, the Office of Reentry, we have a new Office of Violence Prevention. We know when people don't have stable homes, violence increase. How do you see your, your department working with the different county offices that already exist?
So to the chair, to the councilman, I mean, you've known me for some years, sir. So you know how much I value relationships, how I believe in checking on people, not just when something is wrong, but when the spirit leads you to. That's the same, the same way I move, and as I said, in my five-to-nine, that's how I move in my nine-to-five. I believe in thoughtful collaborations, engaging with people, being very strategic, giving a lot of respect to the staff and their intuitive movements, and trying to figure out how to evolve beyond that. So already reached out to Simeon Best, for example, we met a few years back. Knowing that he's in reentry, there's a direct nexus. As a veteran, I know Veteran Service Commission, direct nexus. Substance abuse and/or mental health issues, some people have both, some have one or the other. All of that is relevant in going back to the question that I responded to for Councilman Castleberry. All of those relationships are relevant in not only getting people in a home, but then allowing them to stay there. You know, a short-term answer is not put someone in a facility without giving them the wraparound services that they need. It'll be imperative to work with the continuum of care to ensure that people are being rehabilitated in whatever their respective ailment is or their condition. And that's gonna take all of us, it's gonna take a village. And so it'll be imperative to spend time with those partners internal, this body, as well as the external partners, again, going back to, uh, to Councilman Kelly's question about working across all the communities and trying to identify their needs.
I appreciate it, Tony. As someone who has known you for a number of years, and as Chair of Community Development and Housing, I look forward to working with you in this new role.
To the chair, to the councilman. Thank you, sir.
Councilman Schlepper.
Good afternoon. Thank you for being here. First of all, I wanted to say I appreciate that you're rocking a Paisley tie. Me too. Paisley's my favorite. I just want to call that out. I have kind of a cultural qualitative question.
Love it.
The educator in me likes to ask these types of things, but, you know, as we know, the work is always the work.
Yes, sir.
But in addition to, you know, the nuts and bolts of this role and so many others, I think the strongest organizations have strong qualitative components as well as operational components. So, you know, things like mission, codes of ethic, things like that, similar tenants. So how do you envision housing and community development qualitatively under your leadership as we move forward?
To the chair, to the councilman, I definitely appreciate your question. It's right in line with the things that I hold most important. One of the things I said recently to Director Hernandez is I feel like a chief of staff. And in that role, I took the culture and the well-being of the staff to heart very much. So there's something that I do with my staff now. Every Wednesday, I call it Uplift Wednesday, I shoot them two or three just affirming memes. You know, something on leadership, something about strength, something about perseverance. And so I think it's important to be able to pour into your staff. We've been able, anticipating humbly that I'll get acceptance from this board and move, or from this, from you, I'm fumbling, I'm sorry. From this honorable board that I'll move forward. I've shared with the team that I've really tried to fill a lot of positions that were vacant based off of the slow allocation of funding and the fear that a lot of people had and started looking elsewhere. And because I want it to be a very, I want it to be a strong unit. I'm not leaving because of weakness, I'm leaving because God's blessed me with an opportunity, and I'd be remiss not to at least explore it. But all of that goes to the culture, you know. We, as I said in my speech, and my staff currently or any other staff will say that I prioritize the most vulnerable amongst us. I engaged just this morning, it was a contractor who's had to call on me a couple of times, and he's like, "I haven't gotten an update on my check." I immediately put everybody on there, including the director, that needs to be aware of this. In the event I'm accepted, Friday will be my last day. I don't want to leave ends unturned. Small business contractors can't afford to wait months on top of months for arbitrary things that we should be on top of. So separately, there were two particular staff members that I sent a separate email to them. I'm like, "Come on, y'all, you need to communicate better." And if I can be very transparent, the contractor's African-American, I am, as are the other two staff members. And I was like, "You've both been entrepreneurs in one capacity or another. Could you afford to float this?" So don't leave him in his position. And my eyes were literally welling. I don't know if it was anger or frustration that I needed to say this because I say it all the time, but I had to say it again. One accepted the accountability, responded to me directly, the other did, and left a lengthier response, speaking to the fact of, "I appreciate how you lead us. It's not that common that a leader has the heart that you do." And so that's the culture that I want to work in. I want to be able to call you out on your BS, and you accept it, and call me, I don't mind. My staff know, they've been, they've had opportunities to be very transparent with me, don't disrespect me. We can go in a closed door, we can have all the conversations, I can be all the mofo's, as long as you know when that door opens, I'm Assistant Director, I'm Director, and we will move from a place of respect. And so that's the culture I want to create, where we feel like we're going in a battle together. I got your back, I'm not leading from all the way back there. I'm a manager that will roll their sleeves up, work on the weekend, go to an event when that's what's needed. So very lengthy answer, uh, answer to the chair, to the councilman, I'm sorry. But that's the culture that I believe in, and a culture that we work from a driven, purpose-driven space, understanding that we're impacting lives. That's why I always say that quantitative is important, you need data to go forward. But if confirmed that I'm in front of this, this body, you will not just get numbers from me. You're gonna get stories, you're gonna see how somebody's life was impacted, not just, we may have only hit ten percent of this, but here's what happened with that ten percent. And here's the corrective action to try to get back to whatever respective benchmark we had set that we fell short of. So again, to the chair, to the councilman, sorry for the lengthy answer.
Oh, I appreciate it. I appreciate you, and I look forward to working with you. Thank you.
Other questions? Councilman Jones.
Thank you, Council President, and congratulations.
Thank you, sir. Thank you very much, sir.
Glad to see you have gotten to this point. My first question is, you mentioned in your presentation, uh, working with local communities, the business leaders, faith community. Any thoughts around advocacy to, whether at the state level, federal level, around bringing just more dollars to the community?
Yes, sir. To the chair, to the councilman, I appreciate that question. I see that as a very intricate role. I see my role as being, to an extent, a figurehead. I realize we're a small team, so I can't just be over here kissing babies and shaking hands. I have to, but I have to be able to represent the department, myself, my team, and the executive at the highest levels. So that means identifying funding opportunities, identifying partners on county, state, regional, national levels in order to bring more resources. One of the tasks before me is I need to develop the strategic plan around the housing study that was just done. That's gonna take resources, whether it's in-kind contributions for partners or whether it's a consultant, whether it's my staff. I've only met them once, so I don't know if we have the eternal capacity to do a strategic plan. Arguably, probably not because we would have one. But that's just a presumption without a basis of knowing. So it's gonna be necessary to bring those partners to the table. Again, the in-kind contribution, the financial institutions, the nonprofits and the CDCs, all of us need to develop a clear agenda. We don't have to be best friends, ideally we are, we're getting coffee and crumpets all the time, but you need to figure out how to effectuate a common goal and bring it to fruition. And in that space, money is obviously an underlying part of it.
And as you know, obviously, the fifty-nine cities that make up this county and here to serve all.
Yes, sir.
But you expressed coming from a community, East Cleveland, a depressed community. But we, many of us represent communities where there are tremendous challenges. And I just call them gaps, but when I say gaps, whether it's educational or whether in housing. The market forces just don't serve all of the houses.
Sure.
There is funding that's needed just simply to bring a house up to a sellable cost.
Yes, sir.
You know, they're too far underwater, and that it'll never change unless there's money, and those dollars come from the federal level. Are you familiar with the empowerment zone back in the nineties?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
The empowerment zone, one hundred million, yes, one hundred million dollars was given to the, to this community for this effort, community development effort, economic development effort. Simply said, that's something that's needed, whereas you learn all the challenge, needs of fifty-nine cities and communities in our areas, just like East Cleveland, one hundred million dollars. They don't have to reinvent the, you know, reinvent the wheel, advocacy around getting them to give one hundred million dollars back to this community. I'm not even thinking about inflation, but just as they did in the nineties to help us to continue to, to develop the housing and the, and the neighborhood, neighborhoods in this community.
Yes, sir.
Certainly be something we could talk about.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Councilwoman Turner.
Thank you. Good afternoon, Mr. Scott.
To the chair, to the councilwoman, good afternoon, Councilwoman Turner.
Let me begin by offering my heartfelt congratulations on your nomination. I see you brought some backup.
I would be remiss if I didn't point out His Honor Mayor Ben Holbert, who was very much a mentor and a friend to me. And so I look forward to working with him and his community, should I be confirmed.
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
He was adamant on being here so he could grab me if I said something completely stupid, because he will grab me.
So you and I have served together in many capacities.
Yes, ma'am.
Board of Black Professionals Association Charitable Foundation. And I witnessed your steady leadership and deep commitment to equity and action. And beyond our shared professional work, we're bonded by something even more sacred, common love, the powerful connection between my sisterhood, Delta Sigma Theta Sorority Incorporated, and your brotherhood, Omega Psi Phi Fraternity Incorporated. As Omega teaches, friendship is essential to the soul, and I see that principle reflected in how you lead with compassion, purpose, and accountability to the people you serve. This role is about more than buildings. It's about people, it's about preserving community while advancing opportunity. And that means ensuring the Department of Housing and Community Development not only builds affordable housing, but actively centers voices of Black, Brown, and low-income residents in every decision. It means fully leveraging the power of the Cuyahoga County Land Bank, not just to demolish or acquire, but to revitalize, to restore, and to reimagine land as a pathway to community ownership and generational wealth. It also means recognizing the impact of rising property taxes. We cannot afford to build new homes while allowing legacy residents, especially seniors, to be priced out of the ones they already own. Interdepartmental collaboration with the Treasury and Fiscal Office will be critical to that mission. And finally, I know you're familiar with federal housing programs, particularly HUD grants, but in this volatile political climate, your ability to strategically secure and protect those resources will shape whether we merely manage problems or meaningfully solve them. So my one question is this. What is your vision for protecting housing as a human right in Cuyahoga County? Not just as a project or policy area, but as a foundation for dignity, stability, and generational equity?
To the chair, to the councilwoman, first if I may, thank you very much for the kind words, I appreciate it. I've had the pleasure of knowing you as well for quite some time and watching your ascension. I'm deeply appreciative of your kind words. And I feel like part of your question, like, did you have my opening speech? Because you actually have hit upon quite a, quite a few points. So that means I don't need to sell them because I've already done so. I do see housing as a fundamental right, both from my position as a human being as well as an attorney. I do believe that the very Constitution speaks to a certain level of inalienable rights, and our ability to be free is conditioned upon being somewhere safe and secure, where we can lay our heads, where we can breathe, where we can prosper and grow. So I do see that as very much a fundamental right. So, I do see that as very much a fundamental right and it should be dignified. We shouldn't be in a community where people are calling, calling our homes crack houses. We shouldn't be in a home where predatory lending is accepted. One of the things that I saw when I first came to the city and I was doing, um, co-compliance is I would see two very common themes. I would see, I would see three common themes, I'm sorry. I would see predatory lending as far as people would have egregious interest rates that they couldn't maintain, that had now ballooned up. When I started with the city, it was 2013 and that was in the aftermath, if you would, of the housing crisis. It, it obviously still hasn't fully rebounded, but it was something that was more prevalent. I saw that. People are still suffering from that. I saw the landlords, and I want to be clear and on record that I'm not suggesting all landlords are bad actors, but I've seen more than enough that take advantage of families, that take advantage of CMHA vouchers in order to get people into homes without giving them the proper maintenance and respect that they deserve. And I would see people who through ignorance, indifference, uh, bad estates, uh, management of estates, had allowed taxes to accrue to the point that they couldn't do anything. They couldn't get on a tax plan because maybe they weren't the only family member because they didn't go into sound estate planning. They did not have all the family members. One may be incarcerated, one may lack capacity. And therefore, you can't enter any, any kind of loan or grant agreement to repair your home. This is happening while unfortunately you're in front of, God bless the dead, Judge Raymond Pianca, who very much cared about the, the citizens, but he still had a role to play. So, I saw those things play out that precluded people from being able to take advantage of the American dream of owning a home or even being able to stay where they are or shelter in place, as the Council ladies spoke, uh, to in regards to our seniors, about the cost of living exceeding their neighborhood, their tax rates going up, being doubled 2.5% or so, or 2.5 times, and they can't maintain their house. All of those things holistically impact us. And it's not even a question now of the most vulnerable of us. Any of us in this room find ourselves in a position where the rate of our home is increased to 2.5%, we're gonna have to make some serious considerations on where we allocate our funds to pay our tax debt, to make sure that we stay in a good condition and that we can maintain the quality of our home. So, we need to all be in the room and partnering with some of those conversations. What are ways to provide tax relief to those that fall within a certain level of AMI? What are the ways to be able to provide financial security to citizens who, excuse me, I want to be very specific, senior citizens who are on fixed incomes and they can't deal with property value fluct, uh, property value fluctuations? It's gonna take everybody getting in the room, realizing what can we as a county afford to relinquish? We may not have somebody to fill in the gap to cover that, to cover whatever concessions we make in a tax program. So, what can we afford to lose becomes part of that valuation? And who can we bring to the table from any of our respective partnerships, public or private, to help fill that gap if needed? So, all of those conversations have to come into play to try to protect not just the vulnerable of us, but any of us. Because most people I know, even those who are relatively affluent are somewhere between one to three paychecks of a challenge, or at least starting to dip into their reserves. So, all of that, I'm sorry for the lengthy diatribe, but I feel it's all relevant because it's not a simple answer, is it's all relevant in trying to figure out how to allow people to stay in place, but also be able to create more opportunities for them to be able to get into a home or at least into a respectable space, uh, for a short period of time as they try to get into a long-term solution.
And just to wrap up, um, before we look too far ahead, I just wanna, um, honor the path that brought us here and offer deep gratitude to Sarah Parks Jackson, the first to serve as Director of Housing and Community Development. Her legacy of service and fairness and excellence helped shape the department and touched countless lives. Just want to offer again my congratulations to you and welcome you into this next chapter of service. And may your leadership carry forward the legacy that Sarah Parks Jackson so powerfully established and write a future grounded in justice, opportunity, and care. Thank you.
To the Councilwoman, thank you.
So, uh, I appreciate your commitment to equity very much. The, uh, the fact that we're a diverse community where everyone should be supported cannot be changed by executive order. And I, uh, I look forward to your leadership in pursuing the vision that you so eloquently presented. And I will mention that, that Sarah Parks Jackson is gonna address the Council at the next meeting two weeks from now before her departure. And at this point, I would ask if there is a motion to refer Resolution 2025-0235 favorably to the full Council for second reading.
Ball moved?
Second.
Second. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
A name added.
Uh, Ms. Conwell's name to be added and mine as well.
He's added, ma'am.
Sweeney, Turner.
That was Sweeney.
He's added Castleberry as well.
Turner, Castleberry.
Schlepper.
Schlepper. Okay. And Jones. And I would like to ask the Clerk to please call the roll.
Mr. Castleberry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher?
Yes.
Mr. Schlepper?
Yes.
Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Mr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser? Ms. Simon? Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Affirmative.
Council President Miller?
Yes.
Motion carries.
The resolution is recommended and will go to the full Council.
You still have one more step. To the Chair, to the Councilman, when you come from where I come from, being here, you celebrate it.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
President, if I ask one question, do you like Angela Mia's pizza?
To the Councilmember, to the Chair, when I was young, I loved it. There's no part of my digestive system that should be going near that establishment.
All right.
Shout out to anyone's watching before I end up on the news. It was a phenomenal establishment. I just know my limitations and capabilities at this point.
All right, just live on the memories then, that's all right.
Yep, memories are good. Now, I'm looking for flatbreads. So that my suit fits.
Okay, we have one more item on our-
Thank you all.
-agenda this afternoon. All meetings of the Cuyahoga County Council are open to the public under the open meetings laws. Under that law, council may go into executive session during a meeting for specifically authorized purposes. During executive session, council confers outside the hearing of the public. Council may not make any decisions about any matters in executive session. All decisions are made in public. This afternoon, council will go into executive session for the purpose of discussing a collective bargaining matter. During that time, our livestream will be down and we ask those not specifically needed for the executive session to remain in council chambers. Council members will convene in the adjacent Committee Room A and will re-enter the meeting once the executive session has ended. Is there a motion to go into executive session for the purpose of discussing a collective bargaining matter?
Second.
Been moved and seconded, will the Clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Castleberry?
Yes.
Mr. Gallagher? Mr. Schlepper? Ms. Conwell?
Yes.
Ms. Joan, Mr. Jones, I'm sorry, Ms. Turner?
Yes.
Mr. Hauser? Ms. Simon? Mr. Kelly?
Yes.
Mr. Sweeney?
Yes.
Council President Miller?
Yes.
Again, the motion carries.
We will move to executive session.
Again, the motion carries.
We will move to executive session. The executive session is completed. The committee of the hall will come back to order. Does anyone have any miscellaneous business? Hearing none. The committee of the hall stands adjourned and we will start the council meeting promptly